We'll move on to item number six, please session. I'm a authorized city manager to finalize and release the reimagining Tanfran land use fact sheet. And before we continue, I will be recusing myself due to my close proximity or within the thousand feet that is now the state wall, it used to be 500 unfortunately. Not unfortunately that I'm handing it over to the vice mayor as he has a good last name, Vice Mayor Medina, but that I'm not able to participate within a very important topic. But this time I will recuse myself and we'll be brought back after you folks have done what you need to do. Thanks.
All right. I think this is in the hands of City Manager Grogan. The stage is all yours.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Medina, members of the council and members of the public. I'd also like to ask the city clerk to make sure that Jay Shoal from CBRE is brought into the presentation room.
Jovan, I'm sorry to interrupt, he is currently not in the meeting, I'm looking out for him though.
Melissa, Jay is having trouble, he's locking on, just give him a minute, I just called him.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we will get settled. Why don't I begin with my introductory comments? And I really was gonna start by saying wow, 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 wow. What an exciting item we have before us tonight, reimagining Tanfran. Jovan Grogan, City Manager, I'll be joined shortly by Jay Shoal from CBRE. And we'll talk about his efforts on this project and his work today. I also wanna thank our community and economic development director Pamela Wu, who will also be available to the city council for any questions and has done a lot of the heavy lifting to get to where we are today with this vision and document. You know, as someone that studied planning and economic development planning academically, this is an amazing, amazing opportunity for the city of San Bruno. Forty-four acres, probably the one of the top three development sites in Northern California, really sitting at the nexus of 101, 280, 380. A bar station attached to it, Caltrain, high-capacity bus ride along El Camino Real. So centrally located in the peninsula between San Francisco and the Silicon Valley and so close to SFO, you barely have to get on the freeway. This site for the city of San Bruno has historically been an amazing resource and it is our hope in partnering with both the property owners and the investors that are interested in Tanfran that we can reimagine Tanfran and have it be that locale of destination, e-commerce office and community collaboration. We're really here, 50 years since the mall opened. The Tanfran Mall opened in 1971. We also sit here 122 years since the Tanfran racetrack opened and we all know the story of Seabiscuit and we all know the story of this site. This site has amazing history tied to it. The first airplane to take off and land on an armored naval cruise vessel left from Tanfran Racetrack and landed back on Tanfran Racetrack after landing on the USS Pennsylvania. We also know that this site was home to the Tanfran Assembly Center in a dark period in American history where for a total of 171 days it was home to over 8,000 Japanese Americans who were interned there. But we also know that this site is a site that has undergone significant renovations. We know that in 2005, there was a significant renovation. And as of late, both Sears and JCPenney's, the two anchors on the western portion of the mall have had, one has closed and the other is currently undergoing a liquidation process and will close at some point. And so the city really launched this effort that we're calling reimagining Tanfran for a number of reasons. We know that the retail market has changed significantly over the last 10 to 15 years. How customers shop, the experience that they wanna shop in has added impact on malls across the country and has certainly had an impact on Tanfran. But we also stand here today with the fact that all three of the privately held parcels at Tanfran are actively being marketed. QIC, which is the, a pension, a state pension firm from Australia that owns the mall proper, so that middle third that's in the image that's in your top left-hand corner, and the JCPenney's parcel are both independently actively seeking buyers for the site. And so they have the site out and are seeking buyers. The graphic in the middle shows you that our Tanfran site is the number one site by land acres in the JCPenney's sale. JCPenney's is currently selling 25 of their store locations across the country and the Tanfran site is biggest at 15, at just over 15 acres. We have Seritage, which is a REIT, a real estate investment trust that holds former Sears locations and they are actively seeking investors for a biotech campus and an innovation hub on the Sears portion of the property. And so with that knowledge, the city really engaged CBRE to help organize current and future owners around a shared vision. And the document that we've developed that Jay Shoal will talk about, we're calling it our fact sheet or reimagining Tanfran. And it really outlines a vision of a mixed-use, transit-oriented development that has a blend of commercial, retail, housing, which we all know is a desperate need here in the peninsula, as well as a potential hospitality use. We have designated a minimum of 1,000 housing units knowing that this location as a TLD site is an excellent location for housing. And so CBRE will now talk about their work. They will talk about the conversations that they've had and also present that fact sheet. At the conclusion of today's presentation, the ask of council is to authorize the finalization and the release of this fact sheet to both the development community, the property owners, as well as the public here in San Bruno. So I do believe Jay Shoal is in the room.
Good evening, Jovan, yes, I am on. And would love to present, could you give me sort of sharing rights? Because I've actually tweaked the doc a bit since you and I last spoke. So I've got an updated version, I think. I didn't realize this was going to be a virtual presentation and I was a little bit too bold in my font size and everything. I thought I was gonna be projecting this onto a screen in a room with you all. So I've had to right-size it, so just bear with me for a sec.
Mr. Shoal, you should have permission to share your screen.
Great. And so can you see my screen now?
No, we are unable to see your screen.
Can you see my screen now? It should be on the cover page.
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you all. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, it's a pleasure to be with you all. I can't tell you what a pleasure it's been to actually be engaged with Jovan and Pamela Wu and the city staff. This is one of those rare opportunities that a professional gets to actually think about almost a clean slate in terms of a 44-acre transit-oriented development site in the middle of a city that you can just use your imagination in terms of what are the possibilities? Given that we know that JCPenney's is in play and definitely is going to be doing something to transform the center. Seritage has already approached the city, so we know that they have intentions to actually redevelop their portion of the site. And we've had conversations, as Jovan said, with Queensland Investment Corp. And Jovan, I don't think I've shared this with you, but I've just learned in the last few hours that they may be shelving their disposition strategy and they may be holding for a while longer to see, to play a more active role in terms of how they may wanna participate in transforming the mall itself as well. So I think we'll learn more as we go along here. So we were engaged to actually come up with a vision in terms of what would any prudent investor developer be thinking about in terms of creating a mixed-use environment? And so since all the various participants here are gonna either sell and/or recapitalize and reinvestment in their particular parcel, giving some certainty around what the city's expectations are in terms of what the city needs, what are the community sort of aspects that these developers and investors should address is really the purpose behind the fact sheet. So it's really, we've been engaged to, we've been engaged to actually interact with all the participant parties, proactively manage their expectations and work with them to identify redevelopment solutions that are really aligned with this vision, that are financially viable, that's in everyone's best interest and that provide sort of long-term sort of community benefits to the city of San Bruno. And since I was late to arrive, is this interactive? Or should I just sort of blast through this, the presentation and should we have a conversation at the end, Jovan? Just not sure.
Absolutely, keep going and we will talk at the end.
Okay, great. So the property is actually owned by four property owners. You know, BART is one of those four. JCPenney's, you can see there on the right portion of the slide, is the property that's in the sales process today. It's our understanding that Newmark is in conversations with one investor. In other words, they picked a buyer and they are negotiating a purchase and sale contract. Whether or not they're successful in that, we don't know and we certainly don't know the identity of who that buyer is at this point in time. I could speculate and guess, but I don't think that's in anybody's best interest at the moment. So right now, they're unknown. QIC owns the enclosed portion of the mall and Target is a participant. They're a long-term ground lessee. Their ground lease runs into 270 or so, so we can almost consider them almost a fee simple owner in terms of their views are certainly long-term. And Seritage, the former Sears owner, has the other almost third of the property there. And as part of their parcel, the Century Theaters that is there is also a long-term ground lessee. So in effect, there is a reciprocal easement agreement that actually binds all five of these parties together and it has very various restrictions with respect to how the property needs to be sort of used. All 50 years old, all geared towards what a retail enclosed mall should be in the last 40 or 50 years, but it's certainly not really relevant with respect to sort of how anyone would operate a property like this today. Not germane is probably a better term. And so all the parties realize that in order to create these new uses on-site, most of which are prohibited by the REA and are also prohibited under the current planning from the city, it's gonna require participation and collaboration from all the constituent parties. So the vision. So I would say that the last 16 months has been unprecedented in all of our lives and we were seeing such a huge sort of social, cultural and economic shift, not only as a result of the pandemic, which is obvious to all of us, given that we're doing this virtually today. It's also affected us culturally. The murder of George Floyd has really sort of brought back a sense of community and the importance of social welfare of our neighbors and our fellow citizens in ways that we haven't seen since the 1960s. So there's a huge shift there. And we've also seen some of the economic disparities that have been highlighted by the pandemic as well. We're also seeing guys like me are beginning to phase out of the workforce, the field job markets. Boomers are retiring and over the next decade, there's gonna be one of the largest transfer of wealth from boomers to millennials in the history of our country. So those are gonna create some significant economic shifts that you've seen play out here in the pandemic. If you look at downtown San Francisco, for example, the financial district, it is a ghost town today. But if you look at the neighborhoods in San Francisco where there's housing, there's commerce, there's retail, those places are still resilient and they really sort of thrive well in many of those neighborhoods throughout the Bay Area. Those communities have taken back the streets and so there's been much more of a focus on pedestrian access, less vehicular dependency. Those shifts are here to stay, they're not trends, they're trends. They're not just a result of remedies that take care of sort of how we get together during the pandemic. And so how we look at housing, how we interact in terms of working, living and playing are all in transition. And any investor or developer today, all of these aspects of a transit-oriented development are considerations that they are gonna put on their whiteboard as well. This is a 30,000-foot view, high-level view of what any prudent investor would wanna consider as it addresses a community like the city of San Bruno with respect to how do we deal with placemaking? And so the various sort of uses here, office tech, life sciences, housing, hospitality are all prohibited, both under current planning and the reciprocal easement agreement. And so to begin to have dialogues about that, we need to have all the five parties at the table sort of willing to discuss what's the right mix of these various uses. The city has put a marker down with respect to housing to address the housing crisis not only is San Bruno experiencing, but we're experiencing statewide. And so the Tanfran site is really ideal for providing at least a housing, 1,000 housing units on-site. And so that's something that we've already communicated with the fee simple owners with respect to the city's goal with respect as they think about remaking Tanfran that they need to include in their mix, housing. I would say that so far, Seritage has been looking at this as purely a million-square-foot life sciences park and the JCPenney's marketing and sales team at Newmark have been really touting life sciences as the primary focus of their value creation on that portion of the site as well. So now we're introducing housing as a critical component in terms of how do we get this to be sort of the cool place to be at San Bruno? It's probably my term in terms of coolness, but we want this to be, sort of have a buzz and a vibe to it, that this is a place where people wanna come, meet, congregate, hang out, in addition to going to work, in addition to commuting on BART. So the other aspects of what's gonna make this a sort of 21st century, state-of-the-art development is taking into account sort of health and wellness, which is now top of mind as a result of the pandemic, and sustainability. I mean, climate change is the other thing that's creating a lot of social anxiety today. California wildfires, the flooding you saw in Europe in the last couple of weeks, the flooding and the heats, the excessive temperatures in the Pacific Northwest are all examples that climate change is real and as a result of that, a good portion of our community is really, really focused on how do we deal with that and how do we do with that in a sustainable, resilient manner? So trying to target sort of carbon neutrality as a goal here over the life of this project is something that we think is a prudent goal that we're gonna set for the city. And again, this instance is TOD, sort of access to pedestrian focus and the fact that you can sort of live, work and walk to any aspect of your lifestyle and experience you want throughout the Bay Area is critically important. So sort of breaking that sort of high-level 30,000-foot view down into the various components in terms of looking at this from the city's perspective, we've broken it down into infrastructure and environment and how we'd like the investors to be viewing this, community and housing and connectivity and mobility. With respect to sort of market drivers, you know, the forces that are shaping the real estate landscape today are all about sort of how do you deliver sort of low-carbon performance in buildings? High-performance, low-carbon buildings. And so again, I think that all of the parties that are involved here are up to speed on these things as a goal and I don't think that we're imposing anything that's onerous or different than the way they'd approach this process anyway. Adopting a circular sort of economic principles with respect to both the construction of the project, sort of living and working here and the long-term asset management perspective again, I don't think is a new sort of point for any of these participants in this thing. It's really saying, this is important to the city, how do we align up and align on these things? And the delivery comes really at the tactile reality and once we get together and they actually start to, the massing plan portion of this thing and sort of where various components of this thing end up on the site is really gonna be where the overall sort of reality of the landscape starts to take shape. So the community and housing, again, housing the 1,000 units. We want it to be suitable for all age groups and cultures. We want a diverse product offering with respect to housing, so a combination of for sale and for rent would be ideal. And mess are the obvious, clearly we want all the developers, investors to engage with neighboring communities to understand sort of what the surrounding community is thinking about, what the right solution set here is. And then finally on the page, the connectivity and the mobility. Clearly, the BART station there is an incredible incentive in terms of activating lifestyles with respect. I can be without a car, I can go from my home to my office in the city or my office down in San Jose in the Silicon Valley without ever having to get into a vehicle. What a great amenity. And clearly, we want to imbue into this thing, you know, nature and green spaces designed into the new streetscape and landscape for this site. It includes a combination of sort of public and private open spaces. Process. So in order to get the changes that we'd like to see happen, it requires an amendment to the city's general plan. It will require an amendment to the reciprocal easement agreement that Tanfran has now imposed upon it. It requires establishing a new specific plan, which amends the zoning across the site for the allowance of these different uses, life sciences, housing, hospitality and anything else that comes into play. Environmental and EIR required here in terms of all parties wanting to participate in that. And then there are a couple of other sort of compatibility plan for the San Francisco Airport land use compatibility plan. San Mateo County Comprehensive Airport land use plan is another sort of aspect of getting the box ticked to get this thing to a point where a construction permit can be sort of issued. One of the things I love about Pamela is she's actually committed to, if the parties are aligned and ready to rock and roll and you can see in the upper right-hand corner, we're hoping that occurs by the end of this year, early part of 2021, that if we can do this as expediently as possible, that literally from the time that we've agreed on sort of a master plan, a specific plan, start to finish is 24 months, which would be just ideal with respect to the investors. It creates certainty and certainty means valuation and valuation enhancement. Then finally, CBRE's role is really to manage the interaction between all the parties to create that alignment, to work collaboratively, to get to a design solution and a financially viable sort of specific plan that works for both the owners and the city. We'll bring everybody to the table to work on achieving those goals and those goals simply put are really, we want smart, green and accessible for all, just to keep it simple. And we're gonna do it in a, basically in an open and transparent manner just to make sure that, you know, societal justice and the aspect of equity is top of mind. So Jovan, actually the last slide is yours.
Yeah. So thank you, Jay, members of the city council and the public. Just a last word on next steps. So the next steps that we've outlined is after our discussion today and direction from council, we will move forward with finalizing this fact sheet and distribute it to property owners, the potential investors that Jay has been in communication with as well as the wider investment community that may be interested in Tanfran as well as our public here in the city of San Bruno and San Mateo County. We will continue to have meetings with current property owners and potential investors that, as Jay mentioned, convening everyone around a shared vision. In many ways, this project is geared at being proactive, being ahead of the ball, not waiting until people purchase the property and come to the city and say, here's my vision, here's what I wanna develop as a new property owner. But instead, getting out ahead of it, articulating a vision and then working around a shared vision that you, the city council, will confirm and then work through the master planning process. And that master planning process is really the process where we're really gonna sit down and put pen to pad, do a lot of amazing brainstorm envisioning and really the goal is to arrive at a vision that is beneficial for the San Bruno community. The property owners provide all of the amazing public ground benefits that are articulated in the document. As far as the sample timeline and again, the caveat is this is subject to owner participation, we would like to begin the master plan process in late '21 or early '22. That, as per the schedule we talked about, is a 12 to 15-month process. So depending on the conclusion of that, we would like to have the master plan adopted in either the, sometime between the winter of '22 or the summer of '23. And then we've also outlined a process where all of the project-specific entitlements, and that's when the property owner post-master plan will come in and say, this is the building I wanna build, have it entitled and have a construction permit. Each of those phases, we estimate at a six-to-nine-month phase and so depending on when those come in, we would launch those and be done anywhere from 12 to 18 months. And so realistically, for the public, these things take a long time. They always take a long time. We will partner with the property owners to move the process and do as much concurrent processing as we can. But these large master plans take several years and the entitlements take some time. And so in the normal cadence and the normal expectation, it's important to note that, you know, likely will not be a groundbreaking here until '24 or '25 and that's an important process step for us all to walk into this knowing. The development community knows it, but as a community that just really wants to see that revitalized Tanfran now, it's helpful to set that expectation. So that concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions or direction from the city council. Again, thank you to Jay Shoal, thank you to Pamela Wu, we're just beginning.
Excellent. I suppose we should go to my colleagues, do we have any questions? And I won't be able to see any hands here, so I'm not...
Tom has his hand up.
I have mine. But I put my hand up as you said, questions, I don't have any questions, I have some comments.
Okay, let's go ahead and do it.
So I am so incredibly excited to authorize the release of this fact sheet tonight. I wholeheartedly support this effort. As everyone on this call knows, I'm a lifelong resident of San Bruno. I know firsthand that this mall has been a vital piece of San Bruno's story for generations. My late mother worked at this mall. Both of my sisters worked at that mall. My very first job when I was 15 years old in 19, was at this mall. And Tanfran has served as a gathering place for San Brunans for the last couple of generations. But, you know, we all know that Tanfran's been struggling for some time now and this is not the fault of the merchants, this is not for the property managers, it's simply because time marches on and we've entered a new era where traditional models for retail are no longer the best use for a place like Tanfran. This is an amazing opportunity for us to provide housing, to provide jobs, community space, retail and other commercial opportunities for the next generations and to do it in a sustainable way. I wanna thank our city staff and the team that they've assembled for being proactive in getting out ahead of this and being transparent with our potential partners who may be interested in the site regarding where we stand as a city on our vision for the use of Tanfran.
Is there anybody else? Councilwoman Mason?
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. I just wanted to ask where you have seen in these sorts of developments, what has been the most successful? So has it been mixed, has it been all one, you know, one area? And then I'm just curious to know from your perspective as a consultant.
Well, Councilman Mason, is that specifically around the transformation, redevelopment of an enclosed mall? Or is it...
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, no, I wouldn't say around a mall. I would say, you know, the idea of this next to transit, we're going through this whole transition right now as a city. What would you think is probably the best fit for Tanfran right now?
I think the mixed-use sort of development path that you're on. I mean, that, and that's why I use the example of the San Francisco Financial District. That's not a mixed-use community. That's basically a series of office towers with a couple of residential towers thrown in, mostly vacant even in the best of times because there are foreign investors that don't live there. I mean, it just shows that... Uh, I mean, it, it, it just shows that, that resilient communities, um, require a mix of uses and they, they require connectivity. And that's the really beautiful thing about Tanforan is it's a large sort of slate of land that you can really envision creating sort of the new, sort of best of all worlds that creating a new community can create, um, today on a transit site. I mean, so to, to be able to basically have employers reduce their carbon footprint because somebody's not getting in their car to go to work, they're getting, they're basically walking from their home to the BART station and taking BART into their office. I mean, it's, it's, it offers sort of all the components for the future long-term success of this thing if we get it right in terms of transforming sort of the mall. And the, and the, and the tactical and sort of delicate balance of this thing is, is sort of what's the right combination and location of the housing units versus the office slash life sciences versus the retail, given that we've got three constituent parties that, you know, may or may not share a vision there. And I think that's the work that we have to do is to get everybody on that same sort of page with respect to the shared vision that the combination of these things, the synergy created by this mixed use experience is actually going to create higher value than if they created sort of disparate, three different sort of solutions in the same location.
Right. So, um, so I, similar to Tom, but not necessarily a native San Brunan, uh, went to Tanforan, um, growing up. It was a safe place to go with a bunch of friends in middle school and high school. It used to have a movie theater and, um, I think, um, you know, today going to Tanforan makes me somewhat sad, to be really honest. I went to Hillsdale the other day and it was, um, even in a pandemic booming. I mean, there were people eating at the, uh, food court. There were people walking around. They have a new movie theater. Um, I just, uh, have been recently driving by Stonestown quite often, um, because of a, um, just because of, um, some responsibilities I've had. And, you know, they've put in a, a Whole Foods, a Target, um, they're talking about housing right now, um, mixed with retail. And it appears to be really the future of what we're looking at in the Bay Area of, uh, repurposing malls. Um, we, as everybody on, I believe that has been following our meetings knows, we have desperate need for housing. We, um, when we were looking at Mills Park, a number of people both, uh, in support of and against, uh, Mills Park, uh, I think everyone, uh, was saying the same thing to the council, put housing in Tanforan. Um, when we look at businesses and where businesses can find a home, I've heard from many people, whoa, why don't you guys build more office space in Tanforan? Um, and when we look at retail and the need and the loss that we've really suffered in this pandemic, losing both Sears and, but looks like JCPenney as well, um, not only do residents still need a place to go and shop, but, um, you also need the revenue. The city needs the revenue and we can't lose it. And so what you've presented to us has really answered the desires of many, if not most of the residents here in San Bruno. And so, um, I'm really excited to see what comes before the city. I think that you have a council here who is really open-minded and looking forward to continuing the renaissance that's happening in San Bruno. Um, we have development coming, we have, um, YouTube. We saw earlier in the presentation, the Bay Hill Plan, um, and the Bay Hill Plan links directly to, by crossing the street, uh, to Tanforan, it's probably about a ten-minute walk. Um, and then for those of you who may be watching and aren't so familiar with San Bruno, we also have a downtown streetscape plan. And if you look at the three at a, you know, from a bird's eye level, you really have a beautiful triangle where an individual can easily walk from one point to the next within ten minutes. So, you know, I, I'm really excited to see this, um, hopefully come to fruition. And, uh, and I think that, uh, when, I'm, I'm going to say when this comes to us and, and be very hopeful, but I will be supporting the, the future vision. So thank you so much for bringing this to us tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mason. If anybody else has a comment or, uh, Councilman Salazar, do you have anything?
Thank you, yeah. Uh, just, just a few comments. I don't have any questions, but I, I did want to, uh, thank, uh, our city manager and his staff for, uh, bringing this to us. Um, this is a, a unique opportunity. It's not something that comes along all the time. And, and I know in the past we've, uh, you know, that, uh, after the last renovation of, of the mall, it, it had a rebirth that lasted for a while and, and it was appropriate for the time and given the constraints. But it really seems like, uh, the stars are aligning around, uh, all of these properties. And, um, and, and I think it's great that, um, that we're being proactive and looking, looking forward to some possibilities, uh, sort of charting that ahead of time and, and, uh, not being reactive or waiting until, uh, sometimes it's too late, uh, to make those decisions. So definitely appreciate this coming forward. Uh, it looks, uh, looks like a great vision. Uh, the, the marketing piece looks fantastic, so I'm definitely in favor of moving forward on that.
Thank you, Councilman Salazar. Um, I'm going to make my comment and then we'll open up for public comment. But I think, I think our council here has pretty much hit it on the head. This is an amazing opportunity. This is a time that has just happened to, the, the, the pieces are together, that we have three different owners of Tanforan that are interested in doing something different. And I am behind this. I, I, this has so many positive things. And I wanted to express my appreciation to our city manager and to our, our, our team to proactively put this together, that putting this fact sheet and, and letting the developing, uh, the developers out know, out there know that there's no better size, place, location, anywhere. I'm a little biased, of course, because I'm, because I'm from San Bruno, but drop, drop right at transit, there's no better place, forty-four acres. So, um, thanks again for all of this. And, um, I'll go ahead and open it up for, uh, public comment. City Clerk Thurman?
Uh, yes, the first speaker, uh, actually so far the only speaker is Paul Wapinski.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, um, the speaker from CBRE kept saying that we want, and I'm wondering, where did he get the guidance for what the facility is planning to be? Was that something that was, that, is that his opinion or is that something that the city gave him, uh, to put the thousand houses and all the, um, biotech or whatever was going to be in there? And then the, my other thing is, uh, when, when we do this plan, um, we never include what, what is the city infrastructure going to be to support that? So if there's a thousand houses, figure three people per house, that's another three thousand people. How many, what's the ratio of police officers to citizens? So how many, you know, how many police officers do we have to hire? How many fire, uh, firefighters? You know, do we have enough fire engines to cover that much space? Do we need to buy another one? Is there going to, do we have to build another fire station? You know, the, uh, all those questions that, that are in my mind and I have three minutes to talk. But, uh, you know, what other city services do we have to, to provide? That's going to come out of the city's, uh, coffers and maybe not the developers? Or can we somehow, if we need to have that, uh, all that infrastructure increase for the city? Is there some way you can pass that on to the developers so that there's some kind of revenue stream so that the, the city taxpayers don't have to increase, um, um, or to pay for all that stuff? Those are my questions and comments.
City Manager Grogan? You can pick, uh, for who's going to answer those questions.
Sure. Vice Mayor Medina, at, at a high level, there was a lot there. But let me just say that when, uh, new development, uh, goes through the review process, we absolutely look at all of the municipal service requirements, uh, and factor those in. And there are mechanisms to ensure that development pays their fair share. And the city council and the community knows, we recently instituted development impact fees for this very reason, uh, to ensure that new development pays for their fair share of all that requires city infrastructure. Uh, and so absolutely, uh, we will cross our I's, dot our T's, uh, and, um, uh, do the homework and the analysis through the master plan and visiting process. So, uh, I think that's, uh, sort of the, the best overall answer. There, there's a lot to get into, but, uh, we, we are articulating a high-level vision, uh, and then through that master planning, uh, process, all of the components, uh, and, uh, the pieces that extend from that, uh, will be addressed.
Um, excellent. City Clerk, uh, Thurman, is there, are there any others in, uh, with hands up?
No, there are no other members of the public with their hand raised.
Okay. Action required, city manager?
Yeah, uh, so the, uh, requested action is for the, uh, city council to direct the city manager to finalize and release the document. And so if there's a motion and a second, uh, we will, uh, uh, proceed following that action.
Thank you, and I see Councilman Hamilton's hand up.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and release the reimagining Tanforan land use fact sheet.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Uh, Acting Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mayor Rico Medina recused.
Okay, um, let's take a three-minute recess as we get, uh, the real mayor back into the room and, uh, we'll, we'll see everybody, uh, shortly. Thank you.